Okay, AGP, are we live looking at the monitor? Looks like we're ready to go. Welcome. Welcome, everyone, to tonight's regular city council meeting. It's Tuesday, February 10th, 2015. We're at the Veterans Memorial Hall here at 6:00 PM and we are located at 209 Surf Street here in Morro Bay. For the record, all council members are present. We do have a quorum and we'll call the meeting to order. And it will start off, if you'll please join me, in a moment of silence. Thank you. And now, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, folks, and we did have a closed session meeting. And the report out for that, we have no reportable actions at this time.
Correct.
Thank you. And we'll move on to mayor council members' reports, announcements, and presentations. And I'll start off with a couple. I have a couple of announcements from SLOCOG. So at our last SLOCOG meeting, we had a couple of significant items. And we have our regional transportation plan that's moving through the process. And I just wanted to thank staff for their help in adding some additional items. And just see if I can read through some of those. And then, so we, so Morro Bay, we added about eight more items onto our regional transportation plan, excuse me, one, two, three, so six, six more items onto our regional transportation plan. The significance of that is just getting it on the plan allows the opportunity for funding some of these projects. And also, the same SLOCOG meeting, we have our bike pedestrian improvement request. And so, this is it here, you can't see it, but Morro Bay has got the longest list. So thanks for, to our bike committee, thanks RED, and to all our citizens that are helping with that. So really, if you look at what Morro Bay is doing and what's on the list, it just means we're active and proactive and we're passionate about bicycling. So I just want to put a shout out. And that's some of the announcements from our SLOCOG meeting this month. And then, we also do, we have the bridge, bike pedestrian bridge that we're, that's going to be coming in on February 11th at 4:30. We're going to do our groundbreaking, is that right, Rob?
Yes, the groundbreaking will, excuse me, the groundbreaking will be tomorrow at 4:30. And we're meeting at the north end of the bridge site. So if you come in off of Atascadero Road, west past the high school, come around the corner, onto Barker Dara Road, we'll be gathering right at the end of the road there. So if you meet on the other side, you may have to get your feet wet to cross the creek and get over.
Okay, thanks for that. And then, one last appointment. I recently applied as a representative of Morro Bay to the LAFCO, which is the Local Area Formation Commission, and was appointed an alternate to that LAFCO board. So that was last month, so I'll be taking on that responsibility from Morro Bay and participating in that. So that was an honor. And that concludes my announcements. And Matt, do you have any announcements?
I have one announcement from the Harbor Advisory Board. They're moving ahead with the market feasibility study for the haul-out facility, and so that process is going through. And then, so that's about it.
Thank you, Christine.
Hi, I just wanted to report out that we've started again our Homeless Services Oversight Council. I'm your rep to that countywide board, and we will be meeting to talk about the potential for warming stations in countywide. So we're, that's been something that's been talked about a lot locally here and in other communities, but they're very, small cities rarely have the resources to pull something like that off. So there is going to be a countywide effort to discuss and hopefully find some solutions for warming stations that would be popping up depending upon the weather. And then I was also named vice chair, which really doesn't mean anything but just more meetings. It's nice for Morro Bay. Thank you.
Thanks, Christine. John?
Good evening. Couple of things to report to you as the Tourism Bureau and TIBID liaison. I want to share with you that on the 12th of March at 9:00 AM, their annual shareholder meeting will occur. So if you're so inclined to sit for three hours and hear all about the Tourism Bureau and what they're doing, it is a great opportunity to learn about their initiatives. So I would invite you to that. Secondarily, we did have a groundbreaking this last week. Congratulations to the community and to the council prior to my tenure here for the great job that they did in getting a 21-unit low-income housing development that has just, as I said, broken ground this last week on the corner of Driftwood and Main. And it's going to be an outstanding facility, again, a low-income senior housing facility that will have an educational component and a number of other opportunities for seniors at a very affordable price. So great job, council, prior to us arriving. Thanks for that.
Thanks, John. Noah?
Thank you. And that will be the first lead certified building in the city, which is pretty exciting. A couple of announcements I'd like to go forward with. One, last week, our JPA Subcommittee met with Cayucus CSD to present and review, along with staff, a draft MOU for now, thinking, going forward, what structure we could have with our relationship with Cayucus in the management of the new wastewater treatment plant. That meeting was about two hours long. The Cayucus CSD requested some time to review the draft MOU with their board, so they're going to be doing that. In the meantime, we also have our Citizens Water Reclamation Facility Citizens Advisory Committee meeting tomorrow, I believe. No, yes, tomorrow, Wednesday, 2:00 PM at the Community Center.
Yes, it's an early start time because of the bridge groundbreaking, so trying to fit everything into the same day as we sometimes do. So we're starting a little early with the Wolf PAC or WRF PAC meeting. So we'll be looking at that. And then we're also taking that opportunity to also look at water and sewer rates at that meeting, get a brief look at that.
Great. So you will be reviewing that draft MOU at the WRF PAC meeting?
That's correct.
Consequently, though, the JPA meeting that very night, tomorrow night, has been canceled because there's ongoing work reviewing this MOU and trying to come up with something that we can then revisit after all the boards and community have had a chance to see it. So the next JPA meeting, you can anticipate, would be in March. Mr. Livik just touched on the water and sewer rate study that's ongoing. Our Public Works Advisory Board had an excellent workshop on the initial findings and reviewing the presentation on that. There was some good public participation last month. They're going to be taking a second shot at that based on an update of their initial inputs and some of the community input and reviewing the new ideas, new information that they asked for. That's going to be coming up on February 19th here at 6:00 PM at the Vets Hall. Very important discussion about water and sewer rates, which haven't been raised since the mid-'90s. So the discussion is also being replayed online with AGP, as well as, you can find it at the city website, the slide presentation that really runs down all the potential costs and the initial thoughts of where we are and where we may go with water and sewer rates. Just briefly, sitting on the Air Pollution Control District Board for Morro Bay, we did at the last meeting approve a new grant cycle for the car mower diesel emission reduction incentive program, which is a significant, hundreds of thousands of dollars to help retrofit or replace diesel vehicles, either fleet transportation vehicles or more ag or construction engines. So it's kind of a first-come, first-served basis. The other grant programs are also still active, including marine vessels, which some have taken advantage of here in Morro Bay, and the old car buyback program, which I probably should take advantage of, but I can't. So that, if you would like some more information about the Air Pollution Control District grant programs for those things, you can go to slocleanair.org or just give me a call at 772-7668. And then just very briefly, we had some really excellent police work done over the last couple of weeks, particularly around vehicle break-ins. There was a rash of those. And I just did want to turn it over to Ms. Chris, Ms. Chief Christie, to really kind of review that and remind people just how we can protect ourselves from being victim of break-ins.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Smuckler. So on Sunday night, we had some suspects in and around the beach track area in Cloisters that were essentially breaking into unlocked vehicles. And I want to draw the distinction here that unlocked vehicles presents misdemeanor crimes, unlike if it was a locked vehicle and somebody had a break-in, it would be a felony crime. Reason I'm saying that is misdemeanors typically don't have suspects go to jail. We cite and release folks for crimes such as that. Two of our officers that were working in the early morning hours of Monday morning, Tuesday, they found some suspicious folks and they contacted them, which resulted in some arrests for the crimes from the day prior. That same night, two other folks were in North Morro Bay on Greenwood and Hemlock, and they were doing the same thing. They were checking doors, and if they were unlocked, they were accessing them. And if they were locked, they were moving to the next car. They estimated entering 30 vehicles in North Morro Bay. When the officers contacted them out walking around about 4:00 in the morning, they found lots of stolen property. However, we had nobody that had reported the crimes yet. So we did some information out to the community, and we had some folks that were victims of this crime spree that reported it to our department. We also had a commercial burg on Sunday night, and that too was solved through this investigation by several of our officers and our detectives. So it was excellent police work. They're still writing their reports. We still have lots of stolen property at the police department, so we encourage people to stop by and identify that so we can get that back to people. And thank you very much.
Thanks, Noah. Great announcements, everyone. Mr. Buckingham, any city manager announcements?
Yes, I do. Excuse me, yes, I do. Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for this opportunity just to make a couple of announcements. This is one of the ways we have to get information out to the community, in addition to our website, to the articles that we have recently started, the column in the Bay News, and our Facebook page. Let me just do a quick plug for the, the city's Facebook page is at 366 likes now, and will be, it is fully rolled out. And from our perspective, this isn't just sort of a fun Facebook thing to do, but we intend to use Facebook as one of the primary ways to get information out to the community. You do not have to be a Facebook person to log on to the city's Facebook page and see it. And so we are using that to announce things like meetings, to announce that there won't be a JPA meeting tomorrow night, to announce the groundbreaking for the, for the bridge project, to announce when a tree fell down on Highway 1 last weekend. So essentially, what's happening right now in the community, we're putting up there on our, on our Facebook page, so I encourage you to take a look at that. So one of the things I'd just like to update everybody on is that we've done a, I'd say a minor to moderate staff reorganization. So following several months of observation, of discussion, of comparison, comparing our organization to similar cities, we've made a moderate change to our staff's reorganization. We're convinced that these changes will make us more efficient and more effective and more agile, able to react more quickly to things that we need, to priorities that we need to work on. So what has changed? All of the maintenance activities that were previously in the, in the Parks and Recreation Department have moved into the Public Works Department. And then, all of the planning and building activities that were in the Public Services Department have become their own independent department. And then, the Recreation Department now is focused solely on providing great recreation services. So here's what it looks like in a, in a brief form. I just want to use this to ensure folks know where to go to get assistance. We, of course, have the citizens of Morro Bay at the top who've elected a city council. The city council's appointed a city manager. You see the city attorney there is, is, works for both the city council and for the city manager, so we, we work closely together. The, and then the city clerk, and then we have seven primary departments, or really seven only departments. So Public Works, Mr. Livik, right here, has engineering, maintenance, water, wastewater, and transit. And then the new Community Development Department, Mr. Graham, sitting next to Mr. Livik at the table there. Mr. Graham has responsibility for all planning, building, grant administration, and code enforcement. And then Mr. Woods, who unfortunately had a minor accident playing pickleball at lunch today and can't be with us, but that's appropriate for our Recreation Department head. Mr. Woods has oversight of youth programs, senior programs, sports, and importantly, all reservations for city facilities still go to the Recreation Department. So if you need to use this room, if you need to, want to use a park, want to use any city facility, the Recreation Department has responsibility for doing all the reservations. The maintenance, though, does the setup and tear down for those things. Administrative Services Department, Ms. Slaton, we're sitting right behind me, no change there, finance, utility billing, HR, human resources, and IT. Police Department, no change, but they are, obviously provide great police patrol, investigation, and records-keeping. The Fire Department, we all think of them primarily as emergency operations and paramedic response, but Fire also has fire prevention and disaster preparedness. And then the Harbor Department, no change there with harbor operations, safety, maintenance, with management of our tidestress trust, and with emergency response in the harbor. So the big changes are, there is a Public Works Department, used to be Public Services, that's Mr. Livik, and that's where, that's where maintenance is now. So if there are any city facilities that require maintenance, Rob's the man to go to. And then Scott Graham has Community Development, and so all of our planning, all of our building activities are under Mr. Graham, and that's now directly reporting to the city manager. So hope that's helpful. One other thing I'd like to hit on, as I mentioned sort of briefly at the beginning, where we've entered the digital age here in Morro Bay, and it's changing how we do business really around the world and even in city government. So the internet and the TV provide opportunities for us to be both more transparent and more efficient. AGP, who's here tonight, does a great job televising our meetings, does a great job recording our meetings. But, but one of the challenges is those are sort of on reruns, and you have to plan when you're going to watch that meeting, and you can't really get it on demand right now. Another point is that compared to the lengthy minutes that we've seen at times in the past, video recordings provide a perfect record of meetings. There's no translation errors, no tone errors. You can hear exactly what somebody says. And as I mentioned there on the fifth bullet, that the AGP recordings right now are only available as reruns, which makes access a bit challenging. So, and those detailed or verbatim minutes are also pretty expensive. It takes staff about four days a month to transcribe essentially all of those, those meetings into minutes. So what we're intending to do, first, state law says that our minutes must include the actions taken by the council, and that's all that it has to include. The Morro Bay City Council took, took action back in '97 and '98 just to require synopsis minutes of our meetings, so a brief summary. And, and over time, we sort of, we sort of got into the habit of going towards these very detailed, almost transcript minutes. And that wasn't a council activity or action, that was just staff going that way for one reason or another. So what I intend to do in, in the weeks, months ahead is to return to brief summary minutes where the essence of conversation will be captured. Every speaker and public comment will be noted by name and, and a brief summary of what they commented on. And then here's sort of the neat thing is, is for now, we will upload all of the meetings to YouTube, so to the Morro Bay channel on YouTube, and I could grab it on my iPhone right here. You will be able to go to and watch whenever you want, wherever you want, all the city council meetings instead of sort of waiting for the, for the rerun on AGP. Those, those YouTube videos will also be linked in our minutes, so there'll be a link in the minutes that will link to the precise moment, well, maybe not the precise moment, but the precise item that you are looking for in those minutes. So for example, last meeting, Mr. Maruska gave a presentation on the LEAP program, and in our minutes, in the future, what it'll say is, "Presentation, Mr. Don Maruska, Presentation on LEAP Program," and there'll be a link there that if you click that, will go straight to the point in the YouTube video that that, that item begins. So we're, we're trying to introduce technology in a way that makes our government even more transparent and more accessible. I just wanted to update on everybody, and that's where we intend to go in the, in the weeks and months ahead, once we get all the kinks worked out.
Great work by all, thanks. That's great to daylight it for everyone and show the reorganization that took place. Thank you very much.
I should say, I'd be happy to receive any feedback from, from the community on any of these things. Always looking for great feedback on how we can do things smarter and better.
Thanks, thanks, Dave. One more announcement, I think, Chief Knuckles, we have a new officer in our department. Maybe you can make that announcement for us. There was a badge pinning in the Swearingen the other day. Maybe you can go through that for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Yes, we have a brand-new firefighter. His name is Grant Brady. He's a firefighter paramedic. He is a local boy to my standards. He's been with us for three years as a fire reserve. He graduated from San Diego State. He went to the Fire Academy in Santa Barbara County, our local fire academy. He also did his paramedic training here in San Luis Obispo County. He did his internship in Templeton and Past Rubbles area, and he did his clinical time at Twin Cities Hospital. He's a really bright individual. He's from a family of firefighters. His dad is a division chief from Garden Grove, and, and thank you for all who came to his badge pin yesterday. It was pretty, you see how excited his family was, and thanks for recognizing that.
All right, thanks, Chief. And now we'll move on to public presentations, and I was wondering if Councilmember Johnson wouldn't want, would enlighten us in introducing our guest speaker for the Economic Vitality Corporation, since you're the liaison?
Certainly, absolutely. Yes, I was prepared for that. Yes, absolutely. Glad to. So this evening, our presentation is going to be from the Economic Vitality Council, and that is led by Mike Mancheck. And that, once a month, we gather all of the seven cities, the county representatives. So I am your city representative, and councilperson heading is my alternate if I can't attend. And we gather together with local business owners, also countywide, and we talk about the various hot topics. Things we've discussed last year would be the Tourism Management District that was coming through. And we also have discussions there periodically about airport service, getting perhaps new flights into our airport. EVC also is slightly, has a slight advocacy role sometimes, and you'll see even in our staff reports, they'll write support letters for various things on our countywide economy that will lift all of our boats, as we say here in Morro Bay. So looking forward to the presentation, and thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnson. Thank you for having me. It's always a pleasure to be here. And let me start by thanking Councilmember Johnson for so much energy and focus. It's been a real pleasure working not only with you, but also with Dave Buckingham. There's this tremendous renewed energy about helping the economy locally here, and we're glad to be a partner of this. Let me give just a very brief presentation. This presentation is a little longer than the time allotted, so I'll kind of fly through this, but I'd also like to take questions at the end if I could. So for those not aware or watching, this is a non-profit organization. It's really the county's voice of county business, and it's a public-private partnership, which means that it's, it's supported by both the business community as well as the local government. And that's a very important thing that we have. And it's 20th year. Our resources are, some of those listed, I won't spend time going each, through each of these, but it's really, I've got a slide that I'll go through next, but it's, we're living in a county which has about 8,000 businesses, 67% of which are only one to four employees. So we have a very large geographic basket of very, very small businesses. But some of these businesses require resources. We partner with other resources, whether it's SCORE, whether it's the SBDC and others, and that's very important. So we don't replicate resources, but we partner with them. And one of the things that we really try to help people with is access to capital. That's one of many things. But businesses, even with a recovered economy, so to speak, it's still very challenging. The bankers are still saying that it's very hard to get bank loans still, and that for a range of reasons. But this is where we have the only access to angel investors and venture capitalists in the county. So people try to call us and they'll get help in that way to get the capital they need. So in looking at the county's economy many years ago, the county, we realized that we've got very important, but very few sectors of our county economy. But, but many of these sectors, people don't know much about. So the community, the local government, knows that they're very large, but they don't know some of the details behind it and what drives it, perhaps what are some of the challenges of that, of that industry sector. So what we did is, we think it's an important place for the EVC to commission some of these things. So we commission an expert in a particular field. We hired, for instance, an expert to look at our wine industry, or our tourism industry, or, or air service, and, and find out what do we need to do to either help that sector, to grow jobs in it, or to address some of the challenges coming down the pike. And you can't do that in a vacuum, or simply relying upon your local newspaper to find out what's happening next. It's a much deeper issue than that. The county as a whole, including Morro Bay, and you'll see a picture there in Morro Bay, has gotten a lot of press, and we track a lot of this press. The press is ordinarily about tourism, which is very important, of course, to the city, and count polling, no doubt. But we're at a place where we really want to drive the agenda towards letting the world know that this is a great place to do business. It's not just a visit. And by doing that, we also have to look at our county. Again, I go back to that slide about the number of employees on average. If you look at also the private sector, the middle there, it says 66%. That's the percentage of private sector companies in this county, of about 8,000 businesses. And you also have about 19% in government jobs. That's much higher than the state average. The state average is about 15%. And that in of itself, as when we went through the recession and we saw where the state government wasn't doing well, the high percentage of government jobs was, was a weakness of this county, in that there were furloughs and unemployment and so forth, that because of the state government and its condition, its finances. So this is where I think there's no harm in, yet again, looking to create more private sector jobs, more small companies that really fit, I think, our, our local economy and our local community. If you look at some of the economic challenges, these are challenges that I think Don Maruska and Elite Program are certainly looking at very carefully, and we're really proud to be a partner of that program, the LEAP program. But these are challenges that are outside of a recession. So many of these, if not most of these, are really systemic. They last whether during, before, or after a recession. For instance, you know, a lack of head-of-household jobs. There's a reason why are, we have, I think, and this is my speculation, we have one of the highest percentages of sole proprietors in this county. And I think the reason is because we lack head-of-household jobs. So many of these people, and I've talked to many, say, "I'm going to have to start my own business because I can't find the job for which I was either educated in or trained for." So by that, we have other challenges. These are all, I think, there's solutions around these, and I think the LEAP program will help to address that, which happens in this city. But when we look at, for instance, the median income, we're lower than the state average, but the cost of living in the county is higher. So that causes, as we've all heard, what is the least affordable housing market, one of several in the country, in the entire nation. And it's not because there's more, there are more places that are more expensive than this county, but it's the disparage, the disparity between medium income and medium home cost. And that's a big gap. So that's something we're also dealing with directly. We've got a workforce housing program that we're, we're looking at very carefully, and I've got a slide on that. But just going to go through some of these slides somewhat quickly because of the time. You know, we, several, five years ago exactly, we- You know, we, several, five years ago exactly, we took something similar to the LEAP program, and we got 150 businesses together, business leaders, and we, after doing an assessment through our consultants, which gave us some really insightful information about the county's economy, information that just otherwise was never known. Information such as, if you look at this, and you can see this online on the EVC website, if you look at the blue dot, for instance, up on the right top, that's specialized manufacturing. These bubbles represent the largest job creators in the county, the industries. And this is, was an eye-opener for many. And it taught us about where the jobs were created over time, and it also talked about where some of the weaknesses are. So if you look at the bottom left, you'll see a big gray bubble where there's been very little job growth, and that's, for instance, the rest of the economy. So if you go to our economic strategy, which is this document, you'll see it online, you'll see this, which is six industry clusters for which we have focused the majority of our time and energy. These have now been working for about five years, very effectively, some more active than others, depending on their objectives and also what's going on in their industry. But it enables us to tell the story through articles like this in U.S. Airways magazine that reached about five and a half million people in the back of every airline seat in U.S. Airways, to talk about the fact that we've got this economic strategy, we've got a great place to do business, for otherwise people wouldn't know how to spell this county. So some of the accomplishments, I don't have the time to go through each of these, but we're very excited. We're very pleased that this is actually working, this economic strategy. And through the support of a city like Morro Bay, we're able to accomplish this to, as Councilmember Johnson said, to raise the tide for everyone in the county. We've also got a job fair just for local companies. This has really helped local companies by way of focusing where there are opportunities locally, as opposed to, you know, having, as Don Maruska would say, a brain drain, where we're losing young people to move in other parts of the state of the nation. Workforce Housing Survey, again, we're quite active with this, and we're expecting some really good solutions that come out of that, and we look forward to working with the city on that. So let me shift now to infrastructure and kind of tail in my presentation. Infrastructure, if you went to the economic forecast, which we was really pleased to see the city having a presence at the forecast in November, the local economist, Jordan Levine, said, you know, "The economy is recovered, for the most part." There are people that still question that. But it's time to start looking at infrastructure. And those are the conversations I've had with Dave Buckingham about, you know, what do we need to do? Because after all, it is not getting any less expensive. It is not getting any easier to fix what is either deferred infrastructure around the county, around the nation. This is a national issue. But if you dive into one snippet of this infrastructure, the airport is one of those. You've got a city that, here, that relies heavily on tourism. The airport certainly plays a part of that. And if you look at that, the economic impact, incidentally, I think that's a woefully low number. That's, that is direct economic impacts that the airport causes on our county, which is 180 million a year up to. That does not include all the indirects, which is all the companies that need the airport to be here and thrive. But the airport itself thriving, doing very, very well compared to many airports. The challenge we live in is an environment, as the airport consultant tells me, we spend a lot of time with the airport manager to try to get more flights here, is that we are in a situation where we've got this list of 12 airports throughout the West that have lost some or all of their service. A 13th was added last month, which is Carlsbad, California, which is going to lose all service. So some of these airports have lost some service, some all service, including the neighboring airports, Monterey, Santa Barbara, Santa Maria. It's very concerning. And it's concerning because I think that people don't appreciate that the airport cannot exist unless we use it. And there are times when all of us use it or don't. We choose to drive from an airport. And in fact, 49% of our air-traveling passengers in this county do not use our airport. And we're all guilty of that at some point, but if we don't use it, we'll lose it. And so I think we have to really focus on that, look to see if the fares are higher, and if they're not, try to use a local airport. That said, we're looking at flights potentially to Denver, Sacramento, and Seattle, and we're hoping to have some good news from that in the coming months. It's a very, very challenging industry, even though the economy was recovered and even though fuel prices have dropped. So some of the accomplishments are listed there. I can't go through all those. You can see them on our website. But we're very proud of the partners as well. Here's some of the partners that we use for the resources for business. If anyone needs help, always can call me direct. I'll give you my direct number, it's 788-2013, and I will always help to direct someone with their specific needs for resources. And the Capital Network, these are our partners, which we're very engaged with and involved in, and we're very proud of that network as well. Opportunities, I've talked about those. I think some of them are obvious, but I think that the city is clearly doing the right thing when it's doing its LEAP program. And I'm very excited for the effort and energy that Johnson, Councilmember Johnson, is putting into it, as is Dave Buckingham. I'm very, very bullish on the direction you're all going. It's a model, I think. I think that it's going to take a lot more energy and time, and the EVC is absolutely there in the long haul. And if there's any questions, I'll take them. I ran over a minute, but I'd be more than happy to also talk to people if they have any questions.
Thanks very much for your presentation. And any council comments? Christine, you want to lead us off with any comments?
Well, I just the kind of great stuff that we can get collated in statistics form from the EVC, and it's available for all of us to look at. It's really pretty interesting once you start digging in. And I also forgot to mention that one of our local Morro Bay residents is Christine Rogers, and she's on the staff at the EVC, and she's their sort of numbers cruncher extraordinaire. So she has been able to give us, through the LEAP program, some really interesting new numbers about Morro Bay. One that talks about how we have many more working people in their working years here than we have had in the past. You know, we're, depending upon how you slice and dice the numbers, where perhaps 49% of us are in our working years, which are, you know, more or less between 20 and 50. So that gives us kind of a balance with our retirement community. So it's a good thing if you're retired that a lot of us are working, because those things kind of go together. So I would just appreciate, I know Mike's been very supportive of Morro Bay and our efforts. We're also a member organization, so we also do pay into the EVC, so we're all reaping benefits from those kinds of things. So if you all have any questions, I get to talk to Mike a lot.
All right. Thanks, Christine. Matt, or anybody else on council? John?
Mike, welcome.
Thank you.
Good to have you here, as always. A couple of quick questions for you, if I might. One, what approximately is your mix of funding for public versus private contributions? Just out of curiosity.
Yeah, so about nine years ago when I came on, and this organization's been around for 20, the mix was more weighted towards local government. So each of the seven cities, including the county itself, were the larger contributor. I then, within shifted the emphasis towards the private sector. So business members, our membership grew a lot, and it didn't grow during, I think, the recession, which was a real blessing, but it showed that we were doing, I think, the right things to get their attention and their support. We've since continued to grow the membership in the private sector. So I would be surprised if it wasn't 50/50 at this point in time. The county itself, though, has been one of the largest, if not, it is the largest, actually, supporter of the EVC at this time, and partly due to the fact that they've supported directly the economic strategy. A very important project in its fifth year, for which we've actually gotten two statewide awards for it. So we know that as a model, we think it's working pretty well, but we're always trying to get, you know, input from others to tell us what we could do better. So I hope that answers your question.
Absolutely. And what I was looking for was just the notion that there had been a lot more private partners that had come on board as you have grown and developed, and I think that's a great thing.
Absolutely.
My second question was, and maybe it's a difficult one to answer, but I'll ask just a bottom-line question. What is the single most difficult thing to overcome with regard to attracting businesses to San Luis Obispo County? If you had to narrow it down to maybe one, two items, what would they be? What are the inhibitors, more or less?
It's actually an easy question to answer, and it's a great question. I'm grateful that you asked this question. It's actually, it's an easy question to answer, but it's not an easy, it's not an easy task. So economic development is often broken up into two sorts of practices. It's either in big cities where, or places where it's very pro-growth, there's a lot of business, there's a lot of energy and time and money put into business attraction. And by that, they incentivize, financially incentivize a company to move there. And the challenge with that, especially, it was, that model was tested during the recession, and there's a saying that goes with that, which is, "When the money runs out, they run out," meaning to say, if a company's only looking for a financial incentive to new to a place, you've got to sort of question their motive. Unless it's in a market where they're looking for a million-square-foot of warehouse space or something like that, which we don't do, and that's fine. In terms of the other side, this is what we do, which is what's coined, a phrase was coined throughout the nation called "economic gardening," which means is that you're actually trying to grow your own businesses, trying to support the businesses, and grow them within your county, as opposed to attempting to simply attract. It's not to say we don't do that. We do. That's the reason why, if you saw some of the logos up on the screen, you'll see organizations in Santa Barbara County that we in-kind support through their events, through their networking. We want to make sure that this county's, you know, being marketed, and often people don't think of it that way. Often, people drive right through it, and they don't think about living here, doing business here, et cetera. So this is why I think this is really important, to market the community in a way. To get back to your question, though, the challenge is really, once people find the place, or once people want to come back to the place, because there's often Cal Poly grads, for instance, that say, "I want to move back there." The challenge becomes is the cost of living, the cost of housing, for instance. That's a, that's a, that's a big hurdle to get over. Once they figure out it's a great place to live, and you'll often hear this, is they're shocked at how much it costs. Now, this goes back to the housing income imbalance. There's also a school of thought, and lots of people that tell me that when they lived in the Bay Area, housing was more expensive. However, they were paid a lot more, going back to this imbalance. So I think that we can attract more, or grow more private sector businesses, help those businesses grow, you then create more jobs. With those jobs become more mobility for people to make more money, to afford homes, and we're challenged that way here. So I think that, I was at a meeting of the county supervisors today when I was speaking there, and, you know, this question about the TMD, you know, the Tourism Marketing District. And that sort of approach where you're, you've got more resources, where you're marketing yourself to a bigger audience, is really going to help the business community, not just the tourism sector, because people will say, "I hadn't thought of that." But we are working to develop what are some really important ways to attract people in that, we've done some of the homework for them. For instance, you know, when it comes to schools and broadband and crime, and all these other things that they want to know about, when they can barely spell the name of your county, is really important. And then they, their risk, if you will, has been mitigated by realizing that we've done some of their homework. But I, but going back to the city itself, I think that the city is poised for tremendous things. I think a lot of people don't even think about, for instance, technology companies. Many don't even think, I don't think, about Morro Bay when it comes to having a place to have an office. So I'm really excited about that. I think there's huge prospects. I think the community is perfectly well-suited. And helping to balance the local economy without just retail, it needs to be a mix. It needs to be a balance, and I think that's how we do it. So I hope that answers your question.
Absolutely, and I wanted to thank you for coming out tonight. I really appreciate it.
You're most welcome.
No, you're good. Mr. Mancheck, thanks very much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for your work.
Bye-bye.
All right, thank you. All right, folks, moving on to the agenda, that concludes our public presentations, and we'll open public comment in a minute here. We open our public comment with a business spot, and we have Morro Bay Friends of the Library, that would be Red Davis and Jackie Kinsey. And at this time, we'll open public comment for them to bring us the business spot on a library reopening and all the sorts that go along with that. Welcome.
Thank you. I am Jackie Kinsey, you're a Morro Bay librarian, and I'm so excited today and to share with you the excitement of staff and county library to announce that the renovation of the Morro Bay Library Branch is close to completion. It was necessary for us to stop services this past Saturday in order to remove all the items from the building that you so generously loaned to us and put everything back into our original building. We continue to set up everything. All the books are back in the building, but we have lots of details that we want to finish before we do our grand presentation. We are looking forward to showing off this new floor plan and the bright interior to the community at our open house on Sunday, March 1st, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. And then services will definitely resume on Tuesday, March 3rd, at 10:00 a.m. Other things you can look forward to is 30% more shelving, adult material, a separate audiovisual area, comfortable reading area, colorful children's room, two children's educational computers, six public computer stations, book sale area, and a beautiful fenced-in patio. I want to take this opportunity to say thank you to the city of Morro Bay for the use of their temporary building for the past nine months and assistance with construction details. I also need to say thank you to the community of Morro Bay, not only for their financial support of this project, but also for their unbelievable enthusiasm for library services here in Morro Bay. While in the temporary building, we were able to continue most services to at least 200 people a day in that little tiny building, and we hope to see many more of you at the library soon. And please watch our website, www.slowlibrary.org, for our upcoming programs in our new program room. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
Robert Davis. Morro Bay Friends of the Library want to invite everyone to the grand opening ceremony, March 1st, Sunday, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. Our former branch manager, Jude Long, will be the mistress of ceremonies, and she will introduce our mayor, who will cut the ribbon at 2:00 o'clock. Doors will be open, and everyone can come in. We'll have some short speeches by Supervisor Bruce Gibson, County Librarian Chris Barnicle, and Jackie. Morro Bay Friends of the Library will furnish refreshments. We invite everybody to look around the new facility. We will have a couple of musicians, Guy Budd and Inga Swearingen will be playing background music. Mary Hay of Hay Printing is preparing commemorative bookmarks. And our book sales are going to resume April 18th. The Friends of the Library want to thank the beautiful citizens of Morro Bay who have supported their public library since 1922. Thank you.
Great, Red. I have one, I have one question for you, Jackie. 200 people a day, and what's the square footage of that building?
Oh, my goodness. What, 700, 400 square feet? Something like that?
Guess around 400, yeah. Remarkable. Great, great work, great service.
I also neglected to announce that we will have different hours when we open. So we will be open Tuesday evening from, or Tuesday from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., so one hour earlier, one hour later, and Tuesdays from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Thursday, Friday, Saturday from 10:00 to 5:00. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thanks, you guys. And that public comment is now open. For those who would like to speak to public comment not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name, and welcome.
Good evening, Barry Brandon, Morro Bay. Mr. Buckingham, that's a wonderful presentation you made on the organization chart, but it was really interesting for an area that was left out. And the part that was left out was the economic aspect for the city. With all of the city assets as property, that, and all of the potential leases that we supervise, and with the report that we just had about economic development, it seems like that should be a major function in the city, someone who would be, keep track of our properties, who would write the leases on our properties, who would consider maybe buying more properties. I've been in a county about 25 years. My real estate has increased 400%. Now, 400% in 25 years? You can figure the math. I think the explosion's even bigger. But my point is that that really needs to be looked at, because when a lease comes to the city, it bounces around all different departments. I see it, the Harbor Department works on it, you work on it, you work on it. We really need, if it were my organization, I would find someone to focus on that, because the need is so high. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Thank you, Barry. Anybody else for a public comment?
My name is Lena Thomas. I'm your local bookstore owner, and I'm very excited about the library opening up. I'm going to be really brief tonight. I'm here on parklet business, I have two things to say. I understand that the council is going to be addressing the parklet issue at your May 24, or March 24th meeting. I'm glad to hear that. I think it's the first time that the council, as a whole, will be talking about the parklet situation as part of the LEAP program, so I'll be sure to get the word out on that. And I'm also here to bring you 21 more pages, not signatures, but pages, of people that have signed the petition that we've had going to coalesce. Each of these signatures is a voice, and I hope that each of you are taking the time to have these pages scanned, and at least read through the names of people that have signed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lena. Welcome.
Good evening. Dan Podesta, resident and business owner, and past president of the Morro Bay Fourth Group. As you all probably have heard, there's some changes afoot with the 4th of July celebration in the city. And our past board members feel a responsibility to keep the city informed about where the event stands. We did a massive outreach, public outreach campaign, through both print and online media, and the results of that were that there just simply isn't enough public interest to run the 4th of July event. So, we're at the point where it's highly likely that the 4th of July for 2015 will need to be canceled. You know, it's been a great event for the five years that Morro Bay Fourth has put it on. I think there is some benefit to the city, both economically and socially. I think it brings, you know, beyond the tourism aspect, it brings the community together. And I think that's the great part, that in particular, the park event at Tydland's Park brings the community together during the day, for a massive bike parade, and just some, a family-friendly alternative to some of the other celebrations that go on in the county. So with that said, there's an opportunity that if the city were interested in taking on some or all of that event, we've got the know-how and a small balance in our account that we could pass on, that could help get it started. So, that's all, that's the update. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
My name is Linda Merrill. I want to talk to you tonight about the goals, and I won't be able to stay that late, D4. I sent you all emails, so you know that I'm concerned, very concerned, about the missing part here in our goals. Many of us live in Morro Bay because we love the nature. That's why we live here. We come here to the beauty. I don't know how many of you saw that sunset tonight, but it was priceless. And that's just one thing that makes this city so special. And I think that in our goals, please consider adding our natural resources, and add them to our quality of life. I feel that this protecting and preserving nature is number one on our minds. I've written you all about some of my passions for the beautiful birds that live in the street trees, and I think we should preserve the street trees for, I mean, birds. Also, we have butterfly populations that are diminishing. The population has gone from 250,000 to 40,000 in our county, so that's a grave concern. They do fortunately like our red gum trees, and any plants that you can plant in the winter, they're not real fussy about nectar. Any kind of nectar is good for them, and that's all we really have to provide them with. Also, our clean air and our clean water. For, I would like to have some attention given to the sea otter, sea otters, and that live in our bay, and our marine life, our birds in the estuary. There's a plover program that starts up in March and goes through September, where we have volunteers who go out and monitor the nests, and protect the plovers. And our Harbor Department, thank you Eric, always is very gracious to help people go across those spit, and monitor the plover program. I'm concerned about pollutants in our bay. There I go. Thank you.
Thank you, Lena. Thanks for the emails. Appreciate it.
Thank you for reading them.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Rick Deschler, Morro Bay. Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. A couple of months ago, on December 12th, I think it was, Thursday night, we had a massive windstorm, and the big old tree in my front yard blew over and landed on my car. There was no danger to the public, it was not in the middle of the street, didn't fall there, so didn't feel any need to call 911. Emergency services wasn't necessary. So, my wonderful neighbors and myself, we went out there and we took the tree apart in about an hour. The next day, I grabbed my current AT&amp;T phone book, because I wanted to let the city know, in case they were collecting information on storm damage. So, I look in the front section of government offices, and all the different cities are listed there, and they all have various departments listed. And I look at Morro Bay, and there's two numbers listed. One is Morro Bay, city of 935 Market, YC, I have no idea what YC stands for, and the Wreckin' Parks Sports Line. That's it. No phone numbers for City Hall, not even their address. No Public Works, no Planning Commission, no Harbor Patrol, nothing. I've mentioned this to a couple of people, so I think maybe it is being addressed, but I just wanted to bring it out to the public, in case anybody needs emergency, or needs some sort of services with the city that's not emergency services. Maybe this was deleted in anticipation of the department reorganization. So, next year, we'll have all new numbers in here. I hope that's the case. Thank you for listening, and I don't really need the response. Well, you can always look it up online. I wanted to look it up in the phone book.
Yeah. Thank you, thanks for your input and your comments on that. I think, I think all of our ears were perked up with that, so, thanks, Mr. Dexler, appreciate that, bring it forward. Anybody else for a public comment at this time? Public comment is open.
I'm Pat Beetz, owner of Top Dog Coffee Bar. Between my two businesses, I employ about 20 people. I feel that I must use this opportunity to dispel some myths regarding the parklet in front of my business. Number one, Top Dog did not request the parklet, period. Number two, Top Dog did not request in any way the parklet to be placed where it currently is. Number three, Top Dog understands that we do not own the street or anything on it. Number four, I do not serve on any board in Morro Bay or anywhere in any capacity where I would have used any perceived power to sway either the implementation or the placement of the parklet. Number five, the reality is Top Dog is a business who lost the two spaces directly in front of my store. Number six, for me, it is empirical evidence that positive growth only comes from change. We should, at the very least, in the spirit of improving economic opportunity, give this parklet a chance. Number seven, in light of the petition from my neighbor, we are having to send three to four employees home daily, due to the lack of business. After signing a petition, it would be understandable that visiting the perceived offending business and parklet would be out of the question. Number eight, it is my belief, after several conversations with Mr. Buckingham, that his only intent, and the intent of the council, was to try and revitalize and help all of the downtown merchants, and I thank each and every one of you for that. Number nine, and lastly, it saddens me that we can't work together as a community to look forward. There is no progress of any kind in looking backwards. As a community, we must look forward, and as a business owner who has made it my goal to create jobs for Morro Bay, it is my hope that together, we can embrace a positive economic environment for us all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pat. Anybody else for a public comment?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Roger Ewing, Morro Bay resident. And I may not be here for your March 24th meeting, so I'm going to take this opportunity tonight to lend my support to those in opposition of the location of your parklet. Each of you have worked diligently to make Morro Bay, as a city, more of a community. What makes a community is its government, including its citizenry, listening to them, requesting their voice, requesting their input, being transparent in the decisions you make and the policies you create. I was very surprised and disappointed when this parklet occurred without any public input, without any public knowledge, without any communication to the neighboring businesses. That, to me, is not inclusive. That, to me, is not transparent. The reason I think people are upset about the parklet is because of its location, it looks entirely as if it's an extension of Top Dog's seating capacity. And that's not, as the speaker before me stated, that's not Top Dog's fault. He's benefiting, or at least, I thought he was benefiting. It's the way in which this all occurred, it's not right. We can do better. I think if you had invited the public, we wouldn't be having the discourse we're having now. We wouldn't be having petitions. It wouldn't become a political football. So please, in the future, recognize that as a community, the citizens should be heard. It serves the betterment of everybody, it levels the playing field for everyone. I'm very proud and very pleased with all the good that each of you have done. Don't let this be a stain on your record. Correct it, please. And have a good meeting. Thank you. Oh, do you know what? I have a moment. I want to end on a happier note. I would like to sing the praises of our Public Works Director, Rob Leivich. From the moment he arrived, he brought a breath of fresh air to Morro Bay. His integrity, his honesty, has made Public Works a very exemplary department. He loves Morro Bay, he cares about Morro Bay, and he brings the willingness to do what's right for Morro Bay. And I say, "Thank you, Rob Leivich," and I applaud you.
Thanks, Roger.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good night.
Anybody else for a public comment?
Mr. Mayor, city council, and city staff, good evening. My name is Jeremiah O'Brien, and I'm representing the Morro Bay Commercial Fishermen's Organization. And I came to you this evening to bring up the sanctuary, the Chumash National Sanctuary issue, that is coming to the forefront as we speak. I was trying to save, bringing up this issue for a later date. We have a study by a couple of very well-reputed people in the science community, that will be available to us, but not until Monday at the earliest. So, I have already spoken to a couple of city council people, and I hope to speak to you, Mr. Mayor, and the other city council people at some point, before we hope to agenderize this issue. The reason we're fast-tracking it is, our representative here in this area, on the County Board of Supervisors, had sent a letter to the federal government. And I've got the letter here, it's located on the Chumash National Marine Sanctuary website. And it does state that the nomination has gained support of a wide range of groups, including environmentalists, tribal, and fishing organizations. Our fishing organization was not contacted, and I contacted the Port San Luis Commercial Fishermen's Organization, and they were not contacted. I have not got in touch with our local sport fishing groups, but I will, to see if they were contacted, but they had not informed me of that. So in any case, we are moving a little faster than normal. I did appear in front of the County Board of Supervisors today, and I did not bring this up, although I did indicate to Bruce somewhat privately, although it was in the middle of the meeting, that we were somewhat displeased that he hadn't taken the time to at least speak to us before making a decision, as we feel we are totally unrepresented now, and obviously, we were. But I would like to be in touch with a couple of you in the future that I have not had the opportunity to talk to about this issue, and then hopefully, in the future, we'll ask for it to agenderize something in regard to the sanctuary issue. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeremiah. Anybody else for a public comment?
Susan Stewart, resident of Morro Bay and business owner. And I will confess to you, I have not read the city report on the goals and program objectives, but I did want to mention, it may or may not be in there, but I have emailed you before and talked with you before, about my concern about having some sort of regional outreach from Morro Bay to our own county. And clearly, from what Mike Mancheck said, not only for tourism purposes or business support purposes, but for business development purposes. I think the value of having something coming funneled through the city, through whatever our organizations are, would be a more coordinated and strategic presence in the county, so that as we do the global efforts to bring tourists to the county with the county bid, along with our Tourism Bureau's efforts to bring folks to the heads and beds kind of prospect, I feel like there's a missing place in the center of all that, where we're pulling people into the county, but not getting them from the county, which is going to be San Luis Obispo, Paso Robles, some of these bigger, more, I don't know, sexy kind of spots to go to. We want them to go from there to Morro Bay. We want to attract those people who are visiting, who might want to start up businesses to Morro Bay. We want that German, or French, or Russian visitor to come from San Luis Airport into Morro Bay. So, not sure how you do it, or whether, I know there are reasons it can't go through T-Bid necessarily, if it's part of our economic development program, or what, but somehow, I feel like we don't want to miss that presence in the rest of the county. I know it's important, for me as a small business, that I get my advertising out to that county, to get people in here, and I think it works at a greater level, too. So, keep that in mind somewhere. So keep that in mind somewhere in your discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Hello, Mayor, City Council, staff members. My name's Neil Maloney. I own Morro Bay Oyster Company, and I'm speaking on concern of the Marine Sanctuary. For us, as an aquaculture industry, we're a little nervous in that there might be some further oversight when Morro Bay was made a marine-protected area. They didn't take into account the rights that our lease provides. I'm allowed to grow oysters, clams, mussels, worms, and some seaweed, but they left off all of those items except for oysters when they drafted the marine-protected area. So we're currently having to go back. George, the other farm for Grassy Bar Oyster Company, he's trying to grow clams. They put a stop to that because they have to go back and edit the oversight that they left out of the marine-protected area. So my concern is with the sanctuary that we don't know what language they'll put in there. It's federal, so it doesn't matter what the fish and wildlife tells me I can do in my lease. If the federal government makes a rule, it trumps everything, and once that's in place, it's in place. So we're concerned, and just want to tell you that. Thank you.
Thanks, Neil. Anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Thank you all for your comments and input, everything from our environment, lack of phone numbers, our volunteer groups that have come out, and their comments on the sanctuary. And I think there's one response, Roger, about without public knowledge to our neighboring businesses, and there was an effort to make contact and actually make contact with the neighboring businesses throughout that process. I recognize that and appreciate your comments about the process. And as you're talking about that, I wrote down in my notes, it's about the journey, not the destination. And I think that's part of your point, is, you know, it's about how we got there and to drop down that parklet. You know, I've said in other meetings, you know, there's many different perspectives in how things happen in government. Sometimes it's the, and I've said it before, I'll say it again, government doesn't move fast enough. We need to do this, we need to do that. And then when we move too fast, it's like, whoa, you know? So we went through this exercise. We'll measure it. We will listen. We will take all 23 sheets, Lena, that you gave us. We'll measure it throughout this process at the end, and it'll come back to council to make a decision and action to move forward. To Mr. Beats, to Pat, I should say, you know, Top Dog, you know, it's unfortunate. You know, wherever you land that parklet, I guess there's always going to be a perception that it's for that particular business, wherever it is. And it's just a pilot program. It's just a pilot. You're going to land it, going to look at it. You know, don't paint Top Dog because it was in front of their business. So anyway, those are my comments about that. And I thought it was pretty cool to extend your thanks to Mr. Lively. So that was, that's always good to get those types of thanks to staff for the work that's being done, in addition to the parklet, I might add. So at any rate, are there any other comments from council? To my left, Matt, do you have any comments? Christine? No? John? Noah?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on your comments about the parklet because so often, and I hear what you're saying, and I definitely understand where you're coming from, Mr. Ewing, and Lena as well, but so often when we talk about something new, particularly something that we haven't seen here in Morro Bay, it's a conceptual conversation. And in this case, this is a pilot project to try to put something physical in place so that the community can actually touch, feel, and experience it in person, and then decide how they interpret the effectiveness of it, the benefits of it, and whether it's something we should continue. So I've been asking people that contact me, because we're all hearing from people that either like it or don't, or are having questions about it, to at least go down and experience it themselves in preparation for a much more comprehensive review of the benefits and negatives of this sort of a concept for revitalization of downtown districts. So that would be my challenge to anyone that has a concern about it, is please spend some time down there with your dog, grab a book, cup of coffee, whatever, or none of the above, and sit there and then ultimately be able to help inform the conversation as we go forward.
John?
Yep. Dan, I wanted to comment on, is Dan still here? I see him out there. Well, Dan, if you're watching at home, I just wanted to recognize the fourth committee over the last several years that has done an outstanding job of raising money and putting on a wonderful event that not only has drawn tourists in, but I think has brought together a unique sector of the community. And I hear very strongly the message from him and a number of other people that have emailed or talked to me about continuing, at least the notion of doing that, bringing our community together from a nationalistic standpoint, recognizing the patriotic celebration that can occur on that day, and that, you know, the rate-limiting step doesn't have to be the loss of fireworks, and that we could have a wonderful community celebration. So, you know, I'll be working to look for a place to bring that together and make that, hopefully, a community event in the future. So I wanted to thank him for that.
Thanks, John. Okay, that concludes our public comment. We'll move on to the consent agenda. I'm just making some notes here. Thank you. And consent. I will open up public comment for any item on the consent, for anybody who'd like to speak to items on the consent. Is there anybody who'd like to speak to that? Seeing none, I'll close consent, bring it back to council. And are there any items to be pulled on the consent? We have A9.
A8.
A8. Anybody else? So we have A8 and A9. And I would take a motion to approve all items on the consent agenda with the exception of A8 and A9.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Johnson, and a second by Councilmember Heading. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Item A8. Mr. Heading.
Thank you. Just a process potential, potentially comment. This is a request by staff to recommend that City Council award the project contract to Ellison Environmental DBA Fluid Resource Management in the amount of $194,384, and that City Council allocate an additional $20,000 from the sewer accumulation fund to be able to fund a total of $210,000 to cover project costs, including the 8% contingency. The alternative listed was to reject all the bids and rebid the project, thereby delaying the lift station. And the fiscal impact noted was that the budget allocated a total of $190,000 for the project itself, but that an additional $20,000 was obviously needed, and that came, or is recommended that it come from the sewer accumulation fund. I'm not against this motion and/or, I should say, staff report recommendation. However, I think it important that possibly, instead of routinely making this an item that is on the consent agenda item because of the magnitude of the budget variance, that we make it actually an action item that appears on the agenda as such, and that's my comment.
Thanks. Any other comment? Go ahead.
Rob, I have a question for you about this same item. I'm reading the notes as this is routine maintenance on this lift station. So this would then, with this, the Cloisters Lift Station would coincide with Quintana and Front Street, and then thereby, and then the one in the back bay by the, in the State Park, that would mean all of our lift stations citywide are...
Basically new.
Brand new. Okay. So, and then looking at this, this is routine maintenance, and as John's pointing out, the funding formula, $190,000 grand. This is just routine maintenance replacement. There necessarily wasn't anything wrong with it.
No, it wore out, basically. It's probably a little bit ahead of what we would like it to.
Close to 20 years old?
16. It was put in with the Cloisters development. It was placed at that time. We would expect some of those facilities last about 25 years, but we are a little closer to the ocean than industry standard would have us be, and they are exposed to the elements, so they wear faster. This was put in with the development. There were some materials that we wouldn't currently use, like uncoated ductile iron pipe. We would coat it in that environment, but the developer didn't have the same concerns, maybe about the 25-year life that the city of Morro Bay currently has.
Okay. No, I wanted to kind of put that out there just because to show folks that with our capital improvement funds in the last 10 years, we've made some pretty sizable dents in the city's infrastructure. And then going forward, so when people are looking at the, for instance, the South Bay Road being improved with the pavement management index, this is part of just taking care of business in the city and keeping up on things.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comments? See, I'll make one response to Mr. Heading in setting, you know, the agenda. I think that's something Mr. Buckingham and I can work out. You know, often when these things come up, you know, I don't necessarily know the details of the agenda item, and oftentimes this is actually just, you know, the way we've done it in the past, and it doesn't prevent us from pulling it and making these discussions. Thanks for bringing it up. I thought you did, it was great to actually just go through the cost and go through that and daylight it. You know, maybe for some of us, you know, maybe there's the assumptions that, you know, everybody reads that, and, you know, so I appreciate you, you know, going through that and pull it and get into that level of information. So duly noted. Thanks. I would take, entertain a motion to approve item A8.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Heading, a second by Mr. Makawetzky. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? Motion carries 5-0. Item A9. Noah?
Yes, thank you. A9 is, we do this pretty much annually, authorize attendance of the CMAC Annual Washington Week Meetings, which is lobbying for harbor dredging and services for the harbor back in Washington, DC. And we've been very successful with that. It's reviewed here in the staff report. I'm not sure if this is exactly the place to talk about it, but in authorizing this trip, we have had some conversation about the idea of dual purposing the effort to the East Coast and the potential access to our representatives and also larger regulatory agencies like the EPA and so forth, to try to do some head work, getting ahead of ourselves and communicating the effort that we're taking on the wastewater reclamation, water reclamation facility. So I'm, maybe I'll look to city attorney, but I think I wanted to bring that up as an idea that we could pursue and consider and develop a better strategy for how we could potentially do that, that dual purpose of this trip.
Thanks, Noah. Can I respond first here? Thank you. Thanks. You know, thanks for bringing that up, and yes, we have spoken about that, and, you know, I think there is some outreach. I think, Eric, what do we call it? Freelancing? You know, we get through the agenda, it's like, hey, what kind of freelancing can we get done? You know, try to make some connections ahead of time. But I think more to your point, you know, it's maybe working with a consultant or, this is RJ, pronounce the last name for me, Eric?
Lyerly.
Lyerly, thank you. And, you know, they're a lot, professional lobbyist firm that helps us with setting the agendas and the appointments for us to get through that. So I guess the step would be to do something in that same process to pursue particularly things that address our water reclamation facility. And I think that's been discussed before, and I think it's something that, you know, we could definitely re-agendize and/or, you know, I think our goals, you know, maybe that kind of dovetails in how we address our goals. And certainly to be thinking about that this now for next year and how we schedule this and dual-purpose it, I think is, you know, great to bring that up. But, you know, for this point, I think we're just talking about this agenda item, but I think we'd have to do a future agenda item for dual-purposing this. So, you know, I think overall it was just kind of question and answer on that.
Or as you said, talk about it during the goal portion.
Yeah, thank you. And I just, while we have this open, Eric, I was wondering if you could just speak to this for a minute. I think for folks, and, you know, John, I think this speaks to some of your comments here on the previous item. You know, here's one that's on consent, and from an educational standpoint, we do go back annually successfully, and, you know, I think it's, you know, the purpose of that is to continue to be at the table, to continue to be talking with the Army Corps of Engineers, making sure that funding comes into the city of Morro Bay to ensure that we are properly dredged. And it's very interesting. I'm, you know, I've been, you know, very, you know, pleased and honored to go as, you know, as elected. You know, this request is to have our new city manager, Dave Buckingham, go. I think he's pretty familiar with Washington, DC, I think. So, you know, this will be great, but Eric, can you speak about the success? So what we're seeing this year is from the work last year. This trip is going to be concentrating for what we want to get next year. Maybe you can speak to that.
Yeah, thank you, and good evening, Mayor Irons and council. You did a pretty good summary there, so I'll try not to repeat, but, I mean, the importance of going is, you know, our major, our major mission there is going with the California Marine Affairs and Navigation Conference, primarily for Corps of Engineers dredging funding and dredging work here in Morro Bay. There's two parts to ensuring that we're thoroughly dredged. To really dredge our entire harbor from stem to stern is anywhere between $7 and $10 million, depending on the year and how much sand built up there is. The city of Morro Bay be pretty hard-pressed to come up with that funding. Corps of Engineers, federal government is responsible for our channel and dredging it, but it's a twofold process to ensure that we get that dredging done. One is that it gets into the Corps of Engineers' work plan, so we have to work with the LA District and ensure that our local folks get that to the division folks for the South Pacific Division, and those folks get it to headquarters, which is Washington, DC, and then eventually it works its way into the president's budget. The second part of that is ensuring that, as I spoke about the president's budget, that it gets in the president's budget, and that makes it through the House and Senate and gets funded. So that's the main thrust of our work going there, and CMAC going as a cohesive group, and it's really worked for the last four to five years and maybe a little longer, where every harbor from Port San Luis is probably the smallest harbor represented in CMAC, to the Port of LA Long Beach, you know, the biggest terminal container probably, you know, in the West Coast for sure, maybe even the United States, speaking with one voice and going and advocating for all of us ports and harbors being a part of the whole, and every, every different harbor is a cog on the wheel, and they're all important, and one of them dropping out and not getting funded makes the wheel not turn properly. So the importance of us going back together as a group really comes out, and it's been an effective tool to get that federal funding loosened up, first of all, and getting the Corps of Engineers to work plan all of our projects and get them funded. Had any questions?
Great. Yeah, thanks, Eric. And just to, since we're talking about it, I'll just add a little bit on there. You may be able to compare it to slow cog. So I spoke recently about San Luis Council of Governments, that all the cities have a seat on that board. So I was talking about the regional transportation plan. It's important that we get our items on that work plan because that's where the transportation funding comes from. That's the monies that funded our Harbor Walk, and will be largely funding the bike pedestrian bridge that's going in. So that's an example. So when we go back there with CMAC, you know, it's, as Eric described, we're going back regionally, we're going back with, you know, the strength of California, really. It's pretty cool, very well-recognized, very well-respected in Washington, DC. We go back there and we ensure that we get on that work plan to make sure that the funding comes to Morro Bay. So, you know, thanks for allowing us to elaborate a little bit on that process, but it's pretty important for us, and I, you know, I think, you know, I think I, as I'm speaking, I think I need to recognize, you know, all the other, you know, my former... know, all the other, you know, my former mayors that have gone and done this as well, as far as former staff members that have kept this thing going. So I think that's enough talking at this point. But if there's anything else, I would take a motion to approve item A9.
Yeah, I'll move, and also just note that most of this is funded through grant with, usually a grant with the joint, Central Coast Joint Cable Fisheries. So another good component of this. So I move approval.
Motion by Noah, a second by Christine. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Approved. Motion carries 5-0. Let's take a seven-minute recess and come back at quarter to the hour. Thank you.